All the speeding to order.
United States of America, and in this republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is Gessi.
Here.
This is McCarthy.
Here.
This is Saxon.
Here.
This is Tamira.
Here.
Mr. Bock.
Here.
Finalization of the agenda, is there anything to add?
The agenda is final, it's presented.
Thank you. We're into superintendent treasures report.
We have two quick reports tonight. And the first, I would turn it over to Mr. Pitt to talk about some upcoming service field trips for next year.
For next year, so we're looking at the summer of 2023, which seems so far away, but we'll be here before we know it. So we do have a request coming out of the high school from Mr. Buck, who is asking for permission to take a service trip to Peru in June of 2023. It would be about a nine day trip, it'd be very similar in fashion to some of the previous trips they've taken. The Dominican Republic, Ecuador have all been places they have visited over the last five or so years. So the guess is that we're looking at 10 to 20 students, it's just hard to say. So we know that with our Ecuador trip, we took seven students, we know when we went to the Dominican Republic, we took 26 students. So what we'd be looking to do of those nine days, one to two of them would be spent on the service piece of it, and the rest of it would be the educational opportunities they would have for traveling there. They'd like to get permission sooner rather than later, because it obviously is a cost to families, so if they want to start saving things like that, it would be a cost of about $3,600. So it is on the pricier side of the trips that we have taken. The good news is that we've got about 18 months or so for the students to start working towards, you know, gathering up together. So they'd be traveling with EF4s, which is who they have traveled with before when they have done these trips. And that would include the hotels, the restaurants, the trips themselves, in addition to airfare and things of that nature. So that would be what we would request for approval at our next meeting here in just over two weeks. And if you have any questions, I will do my best to answer them, and if I can't, I will be happy to give the responses.
So, I'm sorry, do they have a cancellation date?
They do, so they could actually get a full refund minus $350. I will have to get you the exact date on what that cutoff is. But they do have a full cancellation date, and then a reduced cancellation date minus that week.
So I would just, when I was reading through the EF's proposal, I think, and I noticed that there's a couple of different options for insurance.
Correct.
So I, I think that my request would be that just when they meet with parents and students, that they go over that specifically with those options because of the state of the world that we're in right now. You pay a little bit more, you get, you know, you, you can get all of your money back minus whatever. But if you don't, then you're, you're likely out, you know, so much. So that would just be my only request, that they really go over what those insurance policies are.
I am hopeful we'll be back to normal in 2023, but it's hard to say, so I will definitely.
Me too, for sure. I am a little concerned with what I read, that our students may have to stay there in quarantine in the event of a middle break. And what are our responsibilities to our students if we have to continue back and travel to return, and we're leaving students behind in Peru?
So I, I think that one is probably more relevant, there had been a request for this summer as well. I think that one is probably more relevant to this summer, but obviously, if we get to a point to where we're not comfortable, you know, a year from now, then we're at a point to where we could say, you know what, this isn't right for us. And then, you know, not make that trip at that point in time, so.
That's just something we'd make clear to the parents in the event that this trip is a go.
Absolutely.
If COVID is still a reality, this is what this looks like attached.
We were covered. Yeah, we wouldn't leave them by themselves, no. I mean, there's a, we would leave a chaperone with them.
Chaperone, EF has four members that they can have stay back, they would love to fly the pair down if necessary.
Question?
No, I, I just hope it's successful and the students can travel again and experience, you know.
Those that have gone have said it's a life-changing experience, so that's what I'm hoping to provide for our students.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Pitt. Our next report is actually going to be a dual report by Dr. Miller and Mr. Pelfrey. They're going to give us an update on the state of the report card in Ohio and how we're approaching fair. And also, there are some exciting changes coming with the report card down the road that will become a little bit tougher out of the COVID situation. Turning over to Dr. Miller.
Thank you. So thanks for having us, Superintendent Ramsey, Cereal, and Mr. Boyd. We're really finished, we are doing just a real brief, high-level overview of the report card. There are going to be some graphics up here. So the reason that we're doing this now, and you know, with everything COVID, things are a little off. So the report card release date is actually set to release on October 14th this year. So with that date very soon, we wanted to make sure that you had some insight into what you'll see on that report card before it is released. So we did have a waiver, Ohio did ask a waiver last year because of the the different issues that scholarships had to deal with, future COVID. So it wasn't approved by the US Department of Education, and what that means is that there will be no other great issue at all on our report card. So very similar to the report card that we saw last year, where there were no grades, we'll see that again in this report card when it is released. Another piece of that was that no new schools would be identified for priority or focus status, so that those tiered levels of support through the state, that will not be happening again because they knew COVID was a major focus for schools, and so the test results weren't as accurate as they could have been. And then we'll also see some new data elements that are reported this year and then moving into future years. So we'll just, again, very briefly talk about some of those pieces. So this is what the overview page will look like. Again, you'll see all of those NR, those are not North Ridgeville, those are no reports. Although we are really important in the eyes of the state, everybody will look the same. So that's what the overview page will look like again, just so you kind of know that that is coming. Not a ton of data on that opening page, but still lots of data in the report card for us to look at.
So as Dr. Miller was stating, 2021 report card really mirrors the unique circumstances that took place over the last year and a half, two years now. And with that lens in mind, it, it's important to note that it doesn't really inform us of the whole picture, it tells us the whole picture, right? So we wanted to do a state comparison or to share this data across the state to kind of see the impact of the last two years on our, on the data that we're receiving and on the tests that were taking place. So you can see on there approximately 88% of the Ohio's third graders participated in spring of 2021 ELA assessments, and that was down from 97%. So that's a pretty significant drop. And then followed by that in grades five to eight, the participation rates decreased by approximately five to seven percentage points, both ELA and math. And then kind of continuing with that same trend and the, the unique set of circumstances that we were all in, in grades five to eight, and on the high school EOCs, ELA and proficiency rates generally decreased by about eight percentage points, and math proficiency rates decreased by approximately 15 percentage points. So, and with the last bullet in ELA, the average decrease in student scoring, proficient or above was seven percentage points. And math, the average decrease was 11 percentage points. So the reason to share this information, this data with you, is even though that we are getting no reports, there still is data that we are receiving. But again, it's important to note that it's one snapshot, it's one angle of the data that we're taking a look at as we kind of continue to try to rebound and bounce back from this situation that we're currently in.
So we're just going to go over a couple of the priority areas today, just again, so that you have some of this background information. So the first one is the achievement component, and if you remember back, this does measure two different pieces. So it's looking at each indicator, let's see how many students met that passage score on the state test. And then it's also looking at the performance index, which looks at each student, how they did individually. So trying to gauge where they ended up. So even if they didn't make passage, were they close? Or were they accelerated, far exceeding that passage rate? So that proficiency is just one benchmark that they look at, they also look at multiple areas within that. So the first area here, then, we did state comparison of all of the scores, and you can see there that first column in red is North Ridgeville's scores, and then the second is the state average. So you can kind of see that we, as a whole, are right around that state average, a couple of areas that we are very proud of, and a couple of areas that we know we need to take a deeper look at. And so we've already done some of that work. So I'll give you a second to, to look at that. If you want to remember this on the slide. Excuse me, will we receive a copy? Thank you, we'll have all of this. Thank you. What's our, in grade science score?
73.9.
73.9. Thank you. And so obviously, there are some areas here that we're very excited about. Overall, our science at the middle school and high school were very strong, our associate at the high school were some of the better scores that we've seen. So lots to be proud of, even despite the pandemic. All right, so then this is looking at the performance index. So again, looking at those different proficiency levels. So even, obviously, we want all of our kids to make it to proficient, that's where our target is. But we do look at all students and how they move between different categories from one year to the next. So if they were limited in one year and then they move up to basic in the next year, that's going to score some points for the district. So we want to see that bigger picture of where our students are. Obviously, students that are above proficient, if they're scoring accelerated in advanced or even advanced plus, those are going to count even more for our, our calculation of the gap there. You can see there the untested number, I'll point that out. Again, like Mr. Pelfrey mentioned, we across the state saw a decrease in the participation rate, and we saw that here as well. So with these numbers, just take that in the consideration that we don't have all of our students represented in our, our data. So next one we'll look at is the improvement at risk degree readers. So this component looks at how well our students in grades state of grade are doing, based on a couple of different metrics. So looking to see if they are on track or not on track in order to meet the benchmark when they get to third grade. And then also looking at the supports we have in place and how they're moving from one year to the next. So this will be changing pretty significantly after this school year. So we're going to see some big changes in this metric moving forward. We're not exactly sure what that's going to be for us, but we're hopeful that it will continue to show that we are moving our bids where they need to be. So this is the graphic image of some of that data. Again, showing the blue is percentage is on track, and then the red is the percentage is not on track at each grade level. And so this measure looks at a couple of different pieces, it looks at the overall percentage on off track. It looks at how cohort the students do from one year to the next. So if they were off track, did they move to on track in the next year? And then also looks at overall how many of our students met that proficient or passage four on the third grade reader to really get to third grade.
So following with these six components that are on the report card, this one, we're, we're doing a lot of work behind the scenes right now, but first I want to talk about prepare for success component, is how we're getting our students ready for college and career readiness after school or after high school. This is another component that's going to have some significant changes to it in the upcoming months. However, we're not quite sure exactly what that's going to look like either yet, how that's going to impact us. But when we take a look at prepare for success from our 2020 graduated class, there's some areas in here that we can hang our hat on that we're really excited about. So when you look down on the student numbers and then the percentage on the right, you can see our SAT participation is roughly 90%, so we're very excited about that. Some other areas that we're really excited about are AP placement participation, one-third of our students roughly. And then just as exciting is our AP exam scores of three or higher. So we're definitely getting points for that as well, when we're talking about our students' preparedness for after school and their after-school lives, I should say. So when we talk about some of these things, when we look up there at the list for our industry-recognized credentials, we're doing a lot of work on that, and Dr. Miller will be talking about that in a little bit. But we're really excited about some of these areas and some of the work that we're currently doing this school year to prepare us and get us ready for coming for the future here. This is just a bar graph to represent that same information. So you can see again, when you look at the SAT, it's quite high, that's something we want to continue to increase. And then also, when we look at our students that are attending college within two years, that's that last bar down at the end. So that's something also really excited, or really excited for, for them to continue to grow. So the graduation rate component, graduation rate obviously just looks at our four and five-year graduation tracks. So how many of our students are graduating in four years, and how many of our students just missed graduating in that fourth year? And that we're helping to graduate five. So there's no changes upcoming, and when you look at this, we're at 91% for the four-year, and then for the five-year, we're at 90, roughly 94% as well. So really high numbers, again, we're going to continue to work on that and continue to break those numbers up, so we're excited about that as well. Any questions on any of this?
So the most important part of all of it, I think, is, you know, taking this piece of data and really making sure that we're using it effectively to continue to move forward. So we do have a lot of initiatives that are happening in the curriculum department related to this data that I wanted you to be aware of. We are completely recalibrating the way that we do DLT, DLT and TBT, and those are those collaborative structures where teachers are meeting at the teacher level, the building level, and the leadership level to look at data and focus on student achievement. So we're really making that shift where teachers have already started looking at their state data. They're looking at gaps because we now have data from multiple years. So even though this year isn't a full picture of what our students are able to do, when you compare it with multiple years, it's really giving a good indication of some areas where we may have some gaps in our curriculum or some gaps in our structural methods. So we've already started some of that work. Our TBTs are also working to update curriculum maps based on this information, so making sure that everything is in alignment, creation of common assessments, and then really looking at that student data in order to provide intervention, enrichment, and those differentiated supports that all students can learn. So that's one of the things that we're using this data for. And then all of the other data sources that we have as well, because we understand this isn't one piece of that pie. It's an important piece, but it's not the full picture. We are looking to realign our math pathways. So you may have seen in the data that the math piece was one of the areas that was not as high in some of the grade levels. So we're working to realign our pathways and really focusing on some additional curriculum mapping beyond what's happening at TBT level to ensure that we have some really great practices moving forward and that our students are able to receive that high-quality instruction. We are looking at setting up model classrooms in grades three to two. So Stacy Rocco, an employer this year, who's our associate principal at the elementary levels. She is working right now to implement the curriculum instead of model classrooms, so that teachers can go and visit and see all of these great things in action, so we're really excited about that. We focus on the title programming and student identification to ensure that in grades three to two, those students that are struggling academically are showing some indication that they may be a little bit behind some of their peers, that we are identifying them early with multiple data sources and then providing them some additional interventions. And then in general, all of page twelve, we focus on implementing an intervention enrichment period this year. So all grade now have the opportunity for students to have individual support. Teachers are, and we're laying back to that first bullet, looking at data to provide those interventions and enrichment for students. We've shifted our AIA meeting in the last couple of years to really focus on professional development for our attendings, so that we can ensure that all of these things are happening. We're starting some classroom rounds in grades three to eight, so that teachers can have the opportunity to visit other teacher classrooms and see best practices in action. Mr. Pelfrey is working over at the high school a lot right now to really work with the guidance department to help build student graduation plans and success plans, so that every student has a path through high school and then once they leave here. And then as a piece of that, he's also focused on the curricular technical education opportunities for students. And then we just started as a joint collaborative between all departments, an inspiring administrators group. And so we are starting to identify those potential teachers and staff members that have an interest in moving into administration or wanting to be teacher leaders, so that we can start to provide them some opportunities to step up and begin to work with our students in different levels, different capacity. So really about capacity building, and we're really excited, we got a first meeting today right before this meeting, so it went very well. So just a few things, there's many more things happening in the curriculum department. But with this data, whenever this data comes out, I think that the most important thing is what you do with the data, and so we wanted to give you a snapshot of some of that that's happening with the process. If we go back a couple of slides, to where we were talking about. We were talking about the SAT, that one right there. Yeah, so are, does this look at college credit plus classes as well for students? Or I just can't see.
The SAT piece does not.
No, I mean, just with this whole, like.
We do have dual enrollment credit up there, so yes, it's 32%.
Okay, I see it now.
Which is also a really high number as well, so we're also another area we're excited about.
Okay, and this measure should be changing again, so this is what we'll see for this report card. But for next year's report card, they're going to revamp this report card or this component completely. So they will hopefully highlight the things we're doing a little bit better and hopefully not send a sign of letter for it afterwards, so that it's more of a positive reflection of all the things that are happening.
One of the things that I saw today that I am really happy about is that this component moving forward will include those students who opt to move into the military, which right now is not reflected, which I think is sure that we're not recognizing children that are adults at that point who choose to move on into the path of the military component. And that will be, as far as I read today, reflected in the future. So that is significant, and that is something that I've talked to our local representatives about for some time now. And, you know, it's important that that's recognized, and it's important that districts, you know, are recognized for, you know, students moving on, you know, into their futures in any capacity that is successful. So that is one thing that I was really excited to see. And Dr. Miller mentioned moving forward that these report cards will have great, great, greats associated with them. And part of that is because the way in which it's currently out there, you know, most districts we want to see is C, but we as educators see a C, and we feel like that's pretty average, and that's where most of these should, should really be. So they're going to have stars moving forward, and you can have half-stars, but they'll be stars. And so I'm not exactly sure how that's different or what that will look like, but at least it will take up perception of the grade ladder away. Two, two changes, but we'll highlight all of the changes once we get to that point.
Two questions that might be related. I was just hoping to get a little more information about the model classrooms and the classroom rounds, it sounds interesting, if you're about that.
Yeah, so in grades three to two, Stacy Rocco is working with a few teachers on a volunteer basis. And so she's working through the literacy component that we have in place to set up model classrooms. And then other teachers will be able to voluntarily go into those rooms to see the structure, you know, what is up on the walls, the way they're displaying student work, all of those pieces, so that they can ask questions and really just see the action. So, and it'll be similar in grades three through eight, that actually started with the department chairs in those grades. They attended training last year with Anita Archer on explosive instruction and from a leadership role, and they actually ran with it. So this is their initiation, initiative that they're initiating, and they are really excited. So that's starting this month, where we're going to be going into each other's classrooms, and we have some look forwards based on the learning we did with Anita Archer. And then we will be rolling that up to the rest of staff again on a volunteer basis in the next few months. So that may not actually happen for all staff members until after winter break. But we, we're going to start that, that's the building right now, so that we have that as much moving forward. Thank you.
Can we go to the next screen, please? So at one point, I heard that we're concentrating on trying to get more kids to take the SATs. My question is, why? If 90-some percent of our students are already taking it, when 70% of our students are going to college, why is there an emphasis on SATs? Quite frankly, I think there's, in my opinion, there's better way to allocate our resources than our time when 20% of our students that are taking SATs feels to me like we're doing it for state standard and reported card. And I know we, I know school districts have a tendency of doing that because their report card is what goes to the community, and we tend to push students to take things that helps our report card. And I'm seeing a 20% difference there with kids that are taking what is a college entrance exam, unless it's changed.
You're right, and I think part of it is.
Why do we put an emphasis on that?
Right, so I'm new, but I will tell you, speaking from experience, right? That it's one of those areas that it serves a couple of different purposes. One, obviously, we want to offer our students as many as possible an opportunity for whatever path they choose. If they choose to go to college, we want to make sure that we're giving that access to that. There's a gap between aspiration or aspiring to go to college and going to college. And I think providing the SAT is a great way to close that gap. Where, and that's what that graduation plan will hopefully do, that we're going to help and support our students all the way through from eighth grade up to 12, so if they aspire to go to college, that we can provide support for them, so they do get to go to college. And then it also provides extra data for us, the SAT does, to make sure that we are in fact providing the best possible high-yield impact instruction that we can to our students at the high school level as well.
So we actually get to do that for free, the full SAT implementation, the state fund, one implementation for each district. So when we administer the SAT, that's actually paid for through the state.
I'm glad you mentioned the four-year plan for our students going down into junior high.
Yeah.
So as we, so junior high students, I have kids that clearly had propensity for JBS and hands-on. And we identifying those students and encouraging those students.
100%.
Because at one point, the high school even trying to get some of our counselors out to JBS was difficult. So I want to know if that environment has changed, and as we lay out these plans that will open the technical education and the military and all those other avenues that are readily available, and quite frankly, some of our students should be directed.
Right. So I could tell you, this is a personal area of mine, it's a personal charge. I know this is our superintendent's charge as well, to me and Leon Brewster, and to Heather and all of us to make sure that we really ramp up our, our career technical education. And without question, it is on the forefront of our radar, and we have already been doing work. We're looking right now at exploring three more credentialing classes at the high school level. And that will be pushed down into eighth grade, to be honest with you. So we'll be able to track, find their interests, and then really support that path for them as they move through high school, where they have an option to pick kind of what credentialing or career tech that they're interested in, and then pursue that through those years of high school with our support and with the counselor's support.
Yes, and how much participation will our parents have in that? Because you hear all the time, the only way to success is college, the only way to success is this.
Right.
How much are we going to engage the parents that they know that this is truly to their child's benefit without pigeonholing?
Right, and so this is one thing that Leon, or this is our Brewster and I are talking about, sorry. That to make sure that, you know, we're getting out to kind of take down or tear down some of the connotations that are associated with manufacturing, for example, with some of these career technical education paths that may have been looked at differently. With some of these career technical education paths that may have been looked at differently. But now we can look at them in a different light and it's all about education, right? So it's all about sharing what we have with our community, with our parents, all the exciting things that we're doing and what these paths can be for their, where their students can earn a life sustaining wage and a family wage immediately out of high school. And so that's something that we're trying to do is educate first our students and then our parents simultaneously. In order for them to realize what is out and available in Lorain County specifically. Because there is a shortage of workforce. And so we're setting up job fairs, we're setting up different opportunities for them to explore that. And there's a lot of state support, by the way, a lot of money within the state that is also pushing this.
Going just to add to that, and Mr. Pelfrey mentioned it, you all know this is a passionate fight. And it started early on with a meeting with some area superintendents, board members, and also unions for several of the different trades. And having conversations with those groups about how we can change our culture of it. You know, we talk about this a lot. You hear the term vocational and often think of, you know, those kids that just couldn't cut in high school, which is one hundred percent absolutely absurd. And we're talking about, you know, nineteen seventies vernacular right now, where we should be talking career technical education. We should be talking about students that are rocking the world when they leave North Bridgeville High School because they entered into a skilled trade that, you know, I certainly couldn't do. And, you know, there are many people that can't do that, but why aren't they reflected there? And that was one of the things that I, you know, had a very passionate conversation with. Again, the representatives and the people who are putting these things in place that, you know, clearly are not representing all of the great things that kids do when they leave. Last week I had a meeting with one of our local manufacturing companies. And it was an outstanding meeting, talking about a partnership here in North Bridgeville where kids can in high school go and work and make money and learn manufacturing. And, and also get trained while they're there to move on and make seventy, eighty thousand dollars a year at eighteen, nineteen years old. There is nothing to be ashamed of there. But so often as, as parents and educators, we think college, you must go to college. And it's hard to, you know, get past some of that. So I cannot be more appreciative for the work that Leon Brewster, Chris Pelfrey, Dr. Miller, David Pitt, Jack Evans, everybody is doing to help move all of that forward with your support. And it's going to take some time. You know, but we really need to think about career technical education and can really move away from that idea of vocational education and, you know, something that has a negative connotation to, you know, kids and families, not true.
And that's one of the reasons I'm asking some of these questions. It's the benefit of people are watching. Because it's not nineteen seventies JBS. Parents need to understand that, parents need to understand that JBS is career tax or now schools of choice, that they actually turn away students. But there's a demand, or quite frankly, they don't have enough spots for the number of students that want to go there. And skilled trades are almost formerly a people short of the need that's out there. And your average electrician, plumber, HVAC tech are making thirty bucks an hour. I mean, there's opportunities there, but we've heard for so long that here's your only path to success. And I want to make sure that parents are engaged so that they can see value. Well, you know what? My kid's hands-on. He's pushing the narrative that he's got to go to school. There's no benefit to having to have the school supported in that process. The other part of the four-year plan, the kids that are going to the school. Are we making sure that the parents understand that a certain GPA gets you community college for free? And that there's all these opportunities that they need to start thinking about their freshman year as playing catch-up their junior and senior year, or there's missed opportunities there. And in the past, that wasn't part of the conversation. You kind of found out this stuff haphazardly through the process. And all of a sudden, oh yeah, by the way, if your kid had maintained this, well, great, wonderful. Is that part of the narrative? Is part of the narrative that if you're going to go to school, you're going to borrow sixty thousand dollars for college? Your career is also only going to pay you forty thousand dollars a year? Are we, do we have programs in place where parents really are, the students are armed with that kind of information as well?
First off, I appreciate you asking all the questions about CTE. I'm really excited about that. I'm glad you brought that up because there are a lot, it's a passion of mine. So I'm really excited about that. You brought that to the front. And then as far as the graduation plans and their, and their pathway plans, the short answer is yes. Okay, so the students are currently in, our new high school principal is put in a place, Ranger Seminar. And will address some of these things or an advisory period where these issues or these components or ideas will be addressed. Talked about the work through them like financial literacy, where you're talking about income and things that sort of what that career may deliver to you, what kind of opportunities you will have. And then we're going to continue to expand on that with the support of everyone and the support of the high school counselors. And at the middle school as well at Enrec. And really pushing that from eighth grade forward. So letting them explore their interests and then talking about those careers. And we have some platforms that we're already using in the district that help support the opportunities for those students, really to see what is out there, what their interests are. And then obviously the parents are folded in and will be folded in, continue to be folded into that conversation. I can tell you, this is more exciting work that we're working on right now, that I'm really looking at. It's a big collaborative effort. So it's something that we're going to continue to build and develop as we move through this year, especially into the next year.
One more question. We have on average three hundred plus kids in nine to twelve. For counselors. And what do we need to do to really do this right moving forward to give our students the best opportunity for success when they graduate from high school? Because that's one hundred students per grade level, per counselor. And now I want you to meet with the parents, by the way. How do we do this?
We're always looking at staffing, you know, and really trying to determine, you know, how best to, first of all, work on the things we're already doing to make sure we're doing them well. And then as last, and I, you know, you all know that we've not been shy about saying, you know, that's why it's me. And that is always something we are looking at and one of the things we're focusing on.
Anything else?
My question was kind of related to what he was asking before about the college readiness. And you mentioned about exploring interests. Like what are some examples of how students are, you know, some kids know, okay, from birth, this is what I want to be when I grow up. Others are very clueless and need that help. And to Frank's point, with, you know, guidance, their stress. What, what's, what are some of these ways that they can explore interests at the high school level or even middle school too? Because I know it's everything's certain, so.
So we, as part of the advisory program that we mentioned, that's a piece of it. It's, it's really working with students to start to think about what they want their future to look like. Do they want to go to college? Do they want to go straight to a career? Do they need, you know, additional training and support? So we actually have a program that we had for February, probably yours called NAMYONZ that has some of those surveys and career interest inventories that include it. So that's one of the pieces that we're working using that advisory period to work through with students. So they can start to really reflect and make a path for themselves so that they know where they're headed after graduation.
Thank you.
My question is, what, I, I'm excited to hear that we have a partnership through the school. I, I know a lot of students don't want to leave North Bridgeville to go to our wonderful JBS. They want to stay in the school. What other types of things can we do in the school that will give them some pain love, extra experience without having to leave their home school?
So that's one of the things that we're working on currently. It was brought up by one of our high school teachers. And Mr. Pitt can speak to this as well because we offer this at High Tech Academy. But there are credentials that we're offering that gives them that hands-on skill and the experience that can lead to seals, that can then lead to employment after they have graduated. We're looking at, like I said, higher, or adding three additional credentials in the high school, not at JBS. So and those will be tied to more project lead the way components. So to be tied to more engineering components. And we're looking to see right now, just on teacher licensure and certification, and we're exploring those next steps. And Mrs. Armbruster is, is working in conjunction with JBS, because that's our partner in this, to help support us so we can develop these, these credential programs. So this is, at the moment, we're working on adding three more. And we offer, I think, three right now. And then we can also do another one in addition to that pretty easily. So hopefully we'll have seven here coming up. So and then keep adding to that, because I know that's also important.
So just as an aside, that I know that a lot of the community colleges are now offering credentials and credential work. Instead of like just getting an associate's degree, get credentials and something like that. Hopefully in the future, those will be available to our students, like as CCP classes, as maybe older students, but just something to throw out there.
We just had a fantastic meeting with LCC. And they want to really develop an even more robust relationship with us. So they are all on board with that. So with CCP, so we are in a great position to capitalize on that as well, right?
Can we go back, I think backwards a couple of slides to the report card, which is no grades. Okay, go back a little more because that'll show what I'm trying to, my concern. I wanted to add a little dial in the bottom left.
I apologize. This one.
So that's one of our report card grade. Is that how this looks when we present it to the community? Because it takes me exactly thirty seconds to figure out what our grade is.
Well, this is only one piece of the puzzle.
Well, that's what concerns me is it doesn't tell the whole story. But if that's what it looks like, it provides a graph that says if you scored in this percentile, this is your associate. So is this, is this what it's going to look like?
So on the report card, if, if you were to drill down into the different areas, you can find this. But this wouldn't be the overall component score anyways. So this, even if there were grade design, this wouldn't be the whole grade.
So good, yeah, good. The first slide I hear is what will be released, that we maybe would see. The very first slide, Sam. Which basically just says NR all over it.
Yeah, because when I kept seeing those, it doesn't tell the whole story and the community doesn't have a chance to ask questions like we're asking.
Any other question? Great.
Thank you very much for all that.
Thank you. Thank you. Here's an opportunity hearing out the public. Now's your opportunity to trust the Board of Education if you so desire. See, and none, we will move on. Education report, Tamira.
Thank you. We have two overnight field trips for your consideration under education report. The first is for the men's basketball team to travel to two scrimmages during the month of November. The second is an out-of-the-country service trip, which would happen during the summer of twenty twenty-three. This is the first reading of these items. The second reading and consideration for approval will be at the October nineteenth regular meeting.
I have a question about the overnight field trip with the boys' basketball team. Do we know, are we, I read the materials and there's four kids per room. Are we asking for any kind of vaccination identification or? Thank you.
Communications report, Ms. Jackson.
Thank you. We have five gifts to the North Bridgeville City Schools. It is recommended that the board of education accept the following gifts with appreciation. Five thousand dollars was donated by an anonymous donor to offset the technology cost of the district. One thousand dollars was donated by Jen Phelan to Rachel's Closet Program. Two hundred and twenty books were donated by the Cleveland Kid Book Bank, the North Bridgeville City School Media Center. One gently used car music instrument was donated by Jessica Angel for the Rachel High Tech Academy. Eight backpacks filled with school supplies were donated by New Hope Church in Morse Olstead to the North Bridgeville Academic Center to be used by students in need. We thank our community as always for the tremendous support of our students and our students.
Move on to the human resources report, Ms. Saxon.
We have several items in the human resources report. Forty-eight special project supplemental contracts, one hourly tutor contract, twenty, twenty-three of NREA supplemental contracts, two non-NREA supplemental contracts, thirteen support staff adjustments, one certified staff leave of absence. This is the first reading for these items. The second reading and consideration for approval will be at the October nineteenth regular meeting. This concludes the human resources report.
I have a question about the food service. There's a lot of food service adjustment. Can you give us a, for?
Our food service employees have been working over their contracted hours for the last couple of years. Particularly because of the free, all of those students receiving free breakfast and lunch. And so we have nearly double the amount of lunches that we've done in this building alone and over triple, you know, art of breakfast. And so our employees that are working less than six hours do not usually qualify for benefits or they don't approve six. And so to be fair to those employees, we felt that if they needed to be working over six for this year, the reason that we did those as adjustments, because there's something in our union agreement that once we increase their hours, we can't decrease those in the future. And so this, these adjustments will allow us to, you know, have paid them for their six hours for the time that they're working and also allow them to, you know, receive the benefits that they are due. But it also will allow us to reassess this in the spring because it may be that lunch is no longer free after June thirtieth. And we may need to adjust these back.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. Let's, I'll leave a few items in the human resources report. Two support staff appointments, one support staff leave replacement appointment, one support staff adjustment, three support staff resignations, one and one approval of the NREA tentative agreement. I move to approve the human resources items in one reading.
Ms. Saxon, second question.
Hi, first question. Just the same, it's more. I think it is an overwhelming building and also the hours are not ideal. And so this particular person, you know, for, you know, personal reasons to a different position. The, the position prior to that was vacant was actually left for our physician downstairs as one of our crewers. And so we were excited to be able to provide that opportunity. Which is one of the situations where it just wasn't working out. Is it necessary for us to put in two or, or increase? I don't know how many there are currently. Do we need to increase or is it just a matter of getting the right fit? I think it's just the right fit. And again, the, the timing is not, you know, real such a shit.
I'd just like to mention that I'm excited about the agreement that's on the agenda this evening. And would like to thank everyone that was involved with making that happen. And all the time, dedication, hard work, tears. Maybe there wasn't any blood out of it for sure. I'm glad about that. But yeah, much appreciation.
Ms. Saxon.
Yes.
Mrs. Tamira.
Yes.
Mrs. Yetsey.
Yeah.
Mrs. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Vaca.
Yes.
All right. It's recommended to Board of Education if you're in this regular meeting. Mrs. Tamira.
Yes.
Mrs. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mrs. Yetsey.
Yeah.
Mrs. Saxon.
Yes.
Mr. Vaca.
Yes.
All right, everybody. Thank you. Enjoy the rest of your evening.